Welcome everyone to the very exciting session from pipeline to bottle to pill bottle, bringing drug innovation to patient. I'm Sylvia Kalbert and I have my chair.
Paula Fujiwara, the scientific director of the Union.
So, since we have quite exciting presentations, let's start with the first one. I invite Susan Swindell from, excuse me, Susan Swindell, professor and medical director of HIV Clinic, University of Nebraska Medical Center, USID, US, sorry, to talk about experience from long-acting HIV drug development. Please.
Thank you. Thank you to the organizers for inviting me to talk about this. So first, a few definitions. So this is a slide that was kindly lent to me by Andrew Owen from the University of Liverpool here and relates basically a Google search of if you define, if you Google long-acting drugs, you get multiple different definitions and multiple methods of administering them. Is this working? Yes. So he and Steve Renard have written a very nice position paper cited here with suggestions that we adopt the nomenclature of long-acting and that these be the target sort of definitions. So for an oral agent, dosing frequency of at least a week, for parental at least a month, and for an implant or device, at least six months to qualify as a long-acting agent. So there's a lot of different ways that long-acting agents can be made. Most of them currently are made from existing oral formulations by basically milling them or grinding them up to very small particles in the nano range. And there are several that are familiar to us that are in clinical use in Europe, in the US and elsewhere for contraception, for antipsychotics, and hormone replacement. There are even some rather novel technologies looking at how to deliver long-acting medications in a different way using microchip technology so that the dose can actually be programmed from outside the body and then released inside. But these are very early in development. But there's a lot of interest in the field for different applications. So the advantages obviously of a long-acting medicine, aside from the less frequent dosing, is that you may be able to bypass the oral dosing and have better bioavailability, possibly less adverse events, particularly gastrointestinal ones, potentially less drug-drug interactions, although to my knowledge that really hasn't been tested and proven yet. And for the TB world, perhaps improved adherence and simpler implementation for directly observed therapy programs. And some basic science work in the HIV arena that suggests better tissue penetration into sanctuary sites, which may also be an advantage for TB. But unfortunately, not all drugs are suitable for long-acting formulation, and many TB drugs come into this category. And whether or not a drug will work as a long-acting formulation depends on its physiochemical properties, largely solubility. So for example, in the HIV arena, NRTI or nucleoside reverse transcriptase inhibitors are too water soluble and basically don't work as a long-acting preparation. The amount of drug required, or basically potency, is also a key factor. And as you know, in TB, many of the doses we use are very large, so that's an obstacle. Exposure determines the dosing frequency, and successful formulations basically have a low oral dose, medium to long half-life, and therapeutic concentrations in the nano to micromolar range, which is not necessarily the case for many of the available TB drugs. So this slide is probably very hard to read for anyone that's not in the front row, but it's a little graphic of FDA, US FDA-approved antiretroviral agents, starting with the very first one in 1987. And since then, there have been a total of 37 drugs approved and several fixed-dose combinations of the same. So this is not really to, you know, make people in the TB world jealous or irritated. It's just to illustrate the point that in the same time period, two drugs have been licensed for TB. So we need to do really much better in the drug development arena to be able to have more things, more drugs in the armamentarium that we can look at for potential long-acting therapy. So the best example from the HIV arena of long-acting treatment is in phase three, now phase three clinical trials. There are two drugs which have been successfully tested in phase-two trials, the so-called LATE study. And the design was that patients, newly diagnosed patients with HIV infection who'd never taken antiretroviral therapy, were started on an oral induction phase to get their virus load under control. And those that became undetectable and stayed that way were then randomized to either continue oral therapy or to go on to injectable versions of the same medicines at either eight-week or four-week intervals. And the medicines that were used still had numbers at the time the study was designed. But this is cabotegravir, which is an integrase inhibitor, and this is rilpivirine, which is a non-nucleoside reverse transcriptase inhibitor. So this is two-drug therapy, maintenance therapy for HIV. As you know, most of the regimens for HIV infection have three drugs in them, but there are several studies showing that two drugs may be adequate for maintenance. So in the maintenance phase of the study, then, patients received injections every four or eight weeks. And these are not, I'm actually doing the study at my site, and these are not small injections. This is two, two-mill injections, or three-mill injections, so one into sort of each buttock every four weeks or every eight weeks. So it's basically, you know, like treating syphilis or something. So it's quite a large volume. There are some injection site reactions, although nearly all mild. But surprisingly, our patients are very tolerant of this. Uh-oh. The screen's gone black. Oh, I can't see anything, but you can. So these are the primary endpoints which have been presented but not yet published, and basically shows that in terms of virologic suppression at 48 weeks, there's really no difference to speak of in the continuing oral arm or the two-injectable arms. There's maybe a hint of more virologic failures in the every-eight-week arm, but that was really very small numbers. But because of this, the phase-three studies that are following are actually using Q4 weeks as the regimen. And so there's two studies that are about to start in the US and elsewhere, looking at a larger version of the LATE study, and then also one for patients that are on antiretroviral therapy currently, doing well on it, and then switch to injectable therapy as maintenance, a switch study. So in collaboration with my colleague Charlie Flexner at Johns Hopkins, we actually did a survey of our clinic patients to see what the community thought about this, how they felt about using antiretroviral therapy by injection. So these were people that are in my HIV clinic, are taking oral therapy, doing well on it, many of them on just one pill a day. And very surprisingly, to us at least, a large percentage of them did say they would be interested in having once-monthly injections instead of taking pills. So a lot of the comments we got really reinforced the fact that people get very sick of taking pills. And as you know, for HIV infection, this is lifelong therapy, so a little different from TB. But even TB patients get very sick of taking pills, and many of them have to do it for a long time. And then recently, at the HIV Prevention Conference, it just happened in Chicago, a similar study was presented, looking at men taking antiretroviral therapy for pre-exposure prophylaxis, and whether or not they'd be willing to take this by injection instead. And again, many of them said that they would like that. So how does this apply to TB drugs? So as you may remember, I talked about sort of low oral dosing, long half-life, and then low therapeutic concentrations. And as you can see right out of the gate, some of these drugs are really not ideal for long-acting formulation. So Andrew Owen, again, let me, these slides, which illustrate quite nicely, I think, the chemical properties that we're looking for, for a suitable long-acting formulation. So we have half-life, target concentration, what the daily oral dose is. This partition coefficient basically is a measure of lipophilicity and then water solubility. And so the sweet spot for an ideal long-acting agent fits in the middle of this. This is where we want something to fit. So if you take isoniazid, you can see right away that this doesn't fit very well, mostly in terms of its water solubility. And then looking at other, first-line TB drugs, none of them are ideal, but some of them are close, and then some of them not so close. The newer TB drugs look a tiny bit more promising. So rifibutin here, rifipentin, there's delamined, and there's bedaquiline. So maybe close enough for government work, but this is something that we're interested in testing further. And so we are funded by the NIH through the so-called Long Acting Extended Release Antiretroviral Resource Program, or LEAP. And there is a TB sort of branch of this, or subgroup of this. And the funding includes the resources to, you know, gather the necessary people together, but also to do some modeling and simulation in Andrew Owen's lab here at University of Liverpool. And so we have been doing some modeling of some of the perhaps more promising TB drugs, and these are very early data. And as you can see, very ambitious dosing, but looking at the drugs that we are interested in that maybe come closest to the optimal properties, this is what PK of a single IM dose might look like for those three drugs based on the modeling and simulation. And so we've actually decided to sort of start looking at potential of these drugs for latent TB infection as a first sort of pass, because we're probably only going to need single-drug therapy. And then if we could adapt some of the short courses for treatment of latent infection to maybe one or two injections, that could really be a big breakthrough for the field. And so basically, we have multiple opportunities here in terms of dose reduction, avoidance of side effects, improved adherence, possibly reduced costs too with reduced dosing, compatibility with DOT, but a lot of unanswered questions that have yet to be addressed, and whether or not an oral lead-in would be required, what happens if people miss their injections, and they've got this sort of tail of drug gradually decreasing and promoting development of resistance. So in summary, I will say that I think this is a very exciting field, certainly in antiretroviral therapy, we're excited about the potential for it. I think it has enormous potential for TB if we can get suitable agents that we can work with, but we do need better models, and we're working on it. So those are my acknowledgements. Also, thank you to Owen, to Andrew Owen. And then this is our TB LEAP team, many of whom are here at this meeting, and we need to do better.
Thank you very much. We have some time for questions, please. I think we have one question there.
Norbert, is that you?
Yes, it's me, Norbert. Thanks, Susan. That's a very interesting prospect. One question to me is, if such long-acting drugs would be used, would that be more amenable to something like therapeutic drug monitoring? Because you would have to sample fewer time points, possibly?
Possibly, although some of the challenges, you know, we have with the antiretrovirals that we're looking at, particularly if they do well in terms of tissue penetration, is, you know, does the plasma concentration really tell you the whole story? But that's really all we can measure. But yes, I think so. I think it could be something that would simplify therapeutic drug monitoring, for sure, yeah.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Fern from Harvard Medical School. Thank you, Sue, for a great presentation. One question I had for you, we would love to do this for our TB patients, but as you may know, with both bedaquiline and delamined, there are some questions about QT prolongation. And my question for you would be, if a patient does develop a toxicity to the medication, would we be looking at like needing to give an antidote, or how do you think that might be handled? Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question, Jen. And I didn't go into it in too much detail just because of lack of time, but that is a huge issue, particularly for the depot injections, because the sort of, the nature of the drugs in terms of their lack of water solubility and so on means you can't just dialyze them out or something. And, you know, for most of them, there is no antidote, so that is a big issue. And QT prolongation is one, hepatotoxicity, that sort of thing. So I think we're looking at alternatives, at least for the development phase, perhaps with, you know, topical applications, patches, that sort of thing, implant that you could remove or something. But that's a very big issue, for sure.
One more question, please.
Hi, Wim van der Velde from the Global TB Gap. Regarding the study with patients or HIV-positive people and the acceptability of long-acting, let's say, injections on a monthly basis, was it clearly explained that it was intramuscular in the buttocks every month or so?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Yes, yes. In the survey, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, we actually asked them different questions. We asked them if it was, at first, we thought maybe it could be subcutaneous, but it turns out to be like way too much volume for that to be possible. And so then we did say, yes, intramuscularly. And I've frankly been surprised at the patients in my clinic and how much they seem to like it. So I don't know what to tell you. The company that's running the trial also did a survey of study participants, but they're obviously a very, you know, self-selected group, and they're already on the injections. But the dropout rate has been extremely small. People seem to manage this quite well, and they like the convenience of it, so.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. So we'll move on to our next talk, and we have Dr. Jerry Davis, who's a reader in infection pharmacology from here in this town, University of Liverpool. And he's going to be talking about PKPD applied to TB drug development.
Thank you very much, Paula. And I'm very grateful for the invitation to speak here in Liverpool. I think it's my job in this session to convince you that the concept that pharmacology may be important in drug development is an innovative one. I'm only half joking about that, because the fact that I personally am acquainted with more than 50% of the audience, I think suggests that we still have a bit of a communication issue in terms of pharmacology concepts in tuberculosis, by comparison perhaps with some of the other fields with which we should be comparing ourselves, such as malaria and HIV. So I'll just slip over my completed interest slide, of which I have none. And in this talk, I'm going to stress the importance of pharmacology in drug development, and in particular, in relation to the challenges of drug development in tuberculosis. We need to talk about some pharmacokinetic and pharmacodynamic concepts for this audience, I think, and the ways in which we can understand clinical variability, both in pharmacokinetics and in drug response. And then I'm going to focus a little bit on where the rubber hits the road, if you like, some case studies, and also some recent, fairly recent cautionary tales where PKPD analysis perhaps would have avoided some significant issues in drug development. So just to start really at the beginning, I think nobody will need convincing that drug development in tuberculosis is difficult. Drug development in general is difficult in any therapeutic area, but there are some specific issues with TB that make it particularly hard. And here, this slide really, I'm just summarizing some of the issues that we have in transitioning compounds from HIT through to LEAD, through to candidate, and the different challenges that may arise at each stage. But the thing that I really want to point out here is that whatever data it is that we're dealing with, whether we're talking about in vitro studies, whether we're talking about in vivo and animal work, or whether we're talking about early or late-phase clinical trials, that pharmacology really is the thread that guides all of our thinking about how to progress a drug, and in particular, that modern PKPD analysis is the way that we can do this in the most efficient way possible. So just to begin with, at the very beginning, I think much of pharmacology, I think people who look at pharmacologists, as soon as you begin to talk about pharmacokinetics, their eyes begin to glaze over. And obviously, there's been a lot of focus on PK, and often as an adjunct or an afterthought to clinical studies. But the reality is that pharmacology is really about drug response. It's not just about measuring drug concentrations in the plasma. So that we often talk about the maximum peak concentration, the total plasma exposure, the half-life of a drug, and we relate that sometimes to important characteristics of the target organism, really what we're interested in is drug response. So the green curve at the bottom right of the slide there is talking about how drug concentration influences effect, right up to the EMAX, the maximum effect, with a defined EC 50, 50% of the effect, and for many different drugs, a different shallowness of that response, which is controlled by the Hill coefficient, which is denoted by gamma on this slide. So really, it's the linkage of PK concepts to PD concepts in pharmacodynamics that really defines what we should be doing as pharmacologists. And here is an example of a classic, a classical kind of EMAX curve. And in vitro studies, this is quite easy to define. In fact, I would submit that in fact, it often, sometimes it's not, and it should be. But it's possible to relate that to clinically relevant concentrations, to define the maximum effect of the drug, to define how quickly the effect rises with concentration, and how it relates to clinically meaningful concentrations of the agent. But when it comes to looking at clinical data, beg your pardon, sorry. Sorry, I think there's a slide missing there, strangely. So when it comes to looking at clinical data, defining the full dose response is sometimes difficult. And in fact, the slide that's missing shows the classical dose titration curve of an early bactericidal activity study, which is usually almost one of the first things that we do in patients. So Phase IIa study defines, hopefully, the full dose response curve of a drug right up to the maximum effect, if that can be achieved with the formulation in patients. And defining the maximum tolerated dose has been a concern for clinicians in early development in every therapeutic area, right from the start of the clinical program. And what I'm concerned to point out is that we often think about selecting a dose, and selecting a dose is possibly the single most difficult problem at that phase of drug development. And the dose titration designs that we see with EBA studies, where may define a dose, but they may not define the full range of relevant concentrations and exposures. And here's an example of that, a more recent study looking at rifampicin and increasing the dose of rifampicin. This is the High Rift 1 study, a maximum tolerated, a study designed to try to define the maximum tolerated dose for that drug, which surprisingly remains unknown. And what you can see here, what I want to point to particularly, is the variability in concentrations by dose levels. And so you can see that as the dose increases, and in fact, over this range, it's almost tripled, it's tripled over the entire range of the study, what you can see is that the concentrations achieved, the exposures achieved in patients actually overlap considerably between dose levels. And in fact, from a PKPD perspective, what is determining the response is not the dose. The dose is just a means to achieve the target PKPD index, in this case, the exposure which is driving the effect. And so just looking at the dose won't tell us everything that we need to know about how to handle and develop a drug. And so what's more relevant with PK is to try to confirm population-target exposures, which is one traditional use of it, to characterize variability, particularly in both individuals and in subgroups, to facilitate PKPD analysis, to strengthen our interpretation of dose response, which can sometimes be unclear, as I'll show you in a few minutes, to clarify those PKPD relationships in people, not in mice and not in test tubes, and also sometimes to explore PK toxicity relationships. But above all, an approach that focuses on individualized exposures or PKPD indices in patients is capable of allowing us to simulate and to design better dosing strategies than the ones that we have traditionally developed just using empirical approaches. So PK, I'll emphasize this again, PK is not just an afterthought. There are many, many reasons why you may need to have a PK sub-study in your clinical trial, but ideally, you would have some kind of PK data on almost everyone to facilitate this kind of analysis. And so here's an example of the classical dose titration study that we do in Phase IIa, as I said, going up stepwise on dose and looking at, this is a number of different drugs, but particularly with isoniazid, the classical paradigm in TB is that we know what the maximum dose of isoniazid is, because EBA 0 to 2 studies tell us so. So we reach a maximum effect at about 600 milligrams here, and we don't need to go above that, because after that, the effect plateaus off. And so it's a way of defining an EMAX curve in patients. That having been said, the real relationship is this, that in fact, when you look at the PK parameters of individual patients, you find a very strong straight-line relationship between the plasma exposure and the EBA, and that is continuously increasing. And as you can see in this plot, it's apparent that the plateau of that relationship has not in fact been reached. So PKPD analysis is telling us something different from some of the more classical empirical approaches. So I'm going to move on now to some of the, some of the things that this form of analysis can do for us. And in fact, I'm going to give you, as I said, some cautionary tales about what can happen in drug development when perhaps less thought has been given to PKPD analysis than should have been at the outset. So many people will be familiar with TBTC, Study 29 and Study 29X. I think TBTC are to be commended for many years as having supported pharmacology studies. But one of the problems that occurred during the 29, the 29 and 29X Development Program was that it was quite difficult to interpret dose response just looking at the empirical endpoints that were being used and just using the assigned nominal doses. In fact, there was some discussion, I think, within the team about what should be the correct dose going forward. And it wasn't really until Radha Savitch was able to look more closely at the rifipentin PK data, and to begin to look closely at the relationship between individualized exposures and individualized outcomes, that quite a clear relationship began to emerge between plasma exposure rifipentin and the rate of culture conversion in sputum, which you can see presented here in categorized form on the left-hand side. In fact, Radha has been able to go a bit further recently, and her group have recently just published a paper looking at using cycle threshold in GeneXpert as an alternative pharmacodynamic readout, and again, showing very clearly exactly the same kind of relationships that we see with isoniazid and early bactericidal activity data with longer-term outcomes collected over two or three months. And I think that that is critically important, because measuring the activity of so-called sterilizing drugs, particularly in terms of pharmacodynamics, has historically been very, very difficult, and demonstrating those PKPD relationships has been hard. So I think for us as a field, this is a really important and critical step forward. The next one I'd like to talk about is protonid. And in the protonid development program, an interesting thing happened. So during the early-phase clinical development, the team were upset to find that despite doing an EBA study with multiple dose levels, they were quite unable to demonstrate dose response among, amongst those dose levels, which is always concerning for any development team. And in fact, after some thinking and looking at the PK data, it was decided to do some further animal work to try to understand why this had occurred. So no dose response at doses of above 200 to almost more than 1,000 milligrams. But in mice, further work showed very clearly that in fact, what was driving the pharmacodynamic effect was not exposure of the drug, but rather time above the MIC, and that that was in fact achieved, that the maximum effect was achieved at quite low doses. And so the EBA study was repeated at much lower doses, and the dose that we now use, 100 to 200 milligrams, was the one that was ultimately selected, a dose 10 times less, in fact, than the dose range that originally had been, had been studied. And again, it was PKPD analysis that told, told us what the problem was and how to solve it. it. And finally, a somewhat more complex example, when we think about the bedaquiline Development Program. I know there were many people in the audience yesterday listening to the exciting new results achieved with this drug, but I think we all know, this drug had a near-death experience in Phase II. And this is probably why. This is a drug with very, very complex pharmacokinetics. It's a drug that really needs to be loaded to achieve high concentrations quickly, and because of the long half-life, those concentrations are not achieved sometimes for many, many weeks. And that was something that the developers were aware of, but in the first EBA study that was carried out, various constraints resulted in a study that was much too short. It only lasted for seven days, and in fact, again, there was a lack of dose response, and in fact, even, it was argued at the time, a lack of any effect at all. Subsequent studies in vitro demonstrated that the mechanism of action of the drug is in fact associated with time-dependent activity, and so that it takes some time for bedaquiline to exert its effect through depleting ATP within the mycobacterial cells, and that does not occur for several days. So if all of those factors, I think, had been taken into account, it might have been possible to design a better study and one that would have given a clearer answer to the questions perhaps that were being asked. So to return to where we began, all of these challenges that we face in TB drug development would be facilitated by a greater focus on the PK-PD relationship and updating our knowledge about that relationship at every stage of drug development to enable us to overcome these hurdles. And increasingly, I think now in the TB field, we are seeing the use of advanced pharmacometric methods, methods which make use of specifically a model-based approach, and not just a model for pharmacokinetics, also a model for pharmacodynamics and clinical response. And that is a model that can be updated throughout the development process and finally used not just to analyze clinical trials, but also to design them and plan them in a way that will result in greater efficiency and get drugs to patients faster. So I hope I've convinced you that PK-PD relationships, unsurprisingly, these are drugs after all. They are submitted to pharmacology. It's those relationships that underpin and link preclinical and clinical drug development. Any dosing strategy that we use is really only a means of achieving the right PK-PD target, and I think increasingly, that's the way that we need to think about it. PK information has at several points in several drug development programs proved to be absolutely crucial in interpreting clinical trial results and influencing decisions to proceed or not with development. But it's not just analysis, it's also about design. And right from the beginning, a PK-PD perspective is critical and central to effectively designing studies. And I think in the TB field, that really, it's an increased understanding of and engagement with modern PK-PD methods that will, in the future, be central to accelerating TB drug development. And I think the sooner that we, as a community, embrace and grasp that lesson, the faster things will go. So I'll stop there, Paula.
So thank you very much, Dr. Davis. So we have time for a couple of questions. Come to the mic, identify yourself, and ask the question.
It's kind of a deathly silence.
Okay, no question. Oh, okay, there's one question.
I hate deathly silences.
Thank you, Jen.
Jerry, thank you so much for the interesting presentation. I think one of the issues that often comes up in the field around PK-PD analyses are the problems with collecting the blood and the complicated schedules. And, you know, I think in spite of the smallish-looking audience, we're all convinced and we're convincing our friends how important PK and PD work is, but we often get met with some challenges, particularly in pediatrics, around the volumes of blood, the complicated schedules. And I was just wondering, is anybody looking at, you know, maybe minimizing that or finding other ways to test these drug concentrations? Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. That is a great question. So I think if people are sitting in the audience thinking, you know, we need to be collecting 10 mils of blood from, you know, small children, you know, five times in a day, PK-PD analysis really is very different now. And with modern bioanalytical methods and the use of population analysis, it's possible to design studies that really are incredibly parsimonious in terms of both the number of times that someone needs to be sampled and also the amount of blood that needs to be taken. And so I think when I say that, I think that almost everyone really should have some estimate of exposure or the relevant PK parameter, that technically speaking, that is now feasible. Using population methods, we can obtain adequately precise PK parameters using really quite sparse sampling schemes, and we see that increasingly being used in many, many different studies. I think we, you know, there is inevitably, in every therapeutic area, a certain conservatism. I guess the burden of my talk is that we, as a TB community, perhaps not necessarily many of the people in this room, some of whom are engaged with this kind of work, but certainly the wider community see it as something abstruse and peripheral really to how we develop and use drugs, and I submit that that is not the case. And really, the way that we do studies these days, it should be much easier to incorporate this into not just clinical trials, in fact, but also observational cohorts and even, dare I say it, into routine clinical practice, under the right circumstances.
Okay, thank you very much. The next presentation is a two-parter. We have two presenters, and this was actually the impetus for this session, for me anyway, to hear that there's going to be actually a possibility of a new TB compound. So the first speaker from, and so the topic is progress in scaling up delaminid and introducing Otsuka's new second anti-TB compound. The first speaker will be Rajesh Gupta, and he's the Senior Director for Clinical Development and Corporate Strategy at Otsuka.
Great, thank you. And these topics are actually interlinked, as you will come to see. So just a bit of perspective is that Otsuka's been working on R&amp;D and development of TB drugs for about 30 years now, and recently, delaminid was approved in 2014, and in 2015, we launched back our Fight Back Initiative, which was a way to effectively codify our own internal working structure and actually a better way of communicating externally and working with external partners. And it's basically surrounded by four areas: innovative, R&amp;D, access to patients, optimized patient management, and collaborative capacity building, and you'll see some of the updates from this past year. One of the more interesting things is some of the data that others have been able to provide to us just as a snapshot. Again, this is not our data. We don't collect this data on early outcomes with delaminid. It's with the kindness of the investigators involved in Japan, Korea, Latvia, Estonia, at PIH and at MSF and part of the Compassionate Use Committee that actually gave us this data just to present, to give you a little highlight of what's happening in the field with delaminid. And as you can see, there are a number of caveats on this data. This population represents basically an entire cohort of MDR, pre-XDR, and XDR patients, but it's really predominantly pre-XDR and XDR patients. For example, the compassionate use cohort is 90% pre-XDR and XDR patients. This is talking about culture status, not sputum culture conversion, and that's defined as just the last culture received after the completion of delaminid for that period. So for two months, it would be after two months, the last culture, and after six months of treatment with delaminid, it would be that last culture result. However, the QT result is with for any patient that completed delaminid, or that started delaminid, I'm sorry. And so you'll see larger patient populations there. Within the MSF and the compassionate use cohort, there is an overlap of patients, so there is some double counting that's going on there. And these are also only patients that have completed treatment. But in spite of all of that, there is some promising results here, and just focusing on the six-month culture status, I think you can see a roughly median interim snapshot of about 90%. And more interestingly, I think, is the QTCF prolongation proportions, which are much lower than we saw in our clinical trials, which makes sense because we did heavy aggressive monitoring. I'd argue the most aggressive QT monitoring in any study conducted to date in TB drugs, and of course, we saw a lot more accordingly. This is probably what we'll see programmatically in the field, and I think what it shows is an interesting observation, at least from my end, which is you have QTCF prolongation, which is a hypothetical in a way. It's a value that ends up being potentially correlated with a adverse event. Relative to that adverse event in our own dataset throughout the clinical development program, and to date, we haven't seen any adverse event related to that prolongation of that value. However, you know, there's almost this fear, I think, of introduction, and I take that notion from my MSF colleagues who presented two days ago in the morning, is that it seems like there's this great fear in introducing new drugs, and I speak both of bedaquiline and delaminid, when it's really sometimes about a hypothetical. And yet, we have this complacency over other drugs that probably wouldn't have made it through a drug development process if they were put through the same rigorous development process. I think of the injectables. If I had to do the same slide, I'd have three columns about irreversible renal toxicity, irreversible ototoxicity, and peripheral neuropathy, and these are actually clinical events. And so I do wonder how we have a bit more of ease and complacency over what might be more serious issues and fear over hypothetical issues where we still need to be diligent about it, but I do wonder where the fear regarding implementation has happened. And so regarding implementation, we actually don't track figures on implementation. This is basically the number of countries we think we've supplied to because we get orders. We're a company who get orders, we send them out, and this is what people tell us or where they're in theory being used. That would be about 45 countries to date, which roughly equates to we have shipped out over 1,800 patient courses of delaminid for use in compassionate, expanded access or under normal compassionate, normal programmatic conditions. And that's about 120 compassionate use in 12 countries with registrations submitted and pending in some high-burden countries. And some of this access is provided through donation programs. A few expanded access programs I'd like to highlight would be the one that you probably know the most about, which is through NTB where we provided 400 patient courses, which have all been exhausted, at least as reported by MSF. In addition, we have a pending project with the South African Department of Health and one with India as well. And we also have a partnership with the Global Drug Facility where we've delivered 850 patient courses to date, with another 550 to ship in December. Equally interesting is the way we're trying to work with others to optimize the use of delaminid, and we have about eight studies in progress or ongoing. They're not our studies, they're the studies of others, we're just participating in them. And they're looking at a range of things, from shortening of treatment that's happening in Korea, looking at six- and nine-month regimens, to prophylaxis, to drug-drug interactions, pediatric use, injection-free regimens, et cetera. So this is where the two things tie together, and what Larry's going to present on our new technologies that I announced two days ago at the Working Group on New Drugs. Otsuka has never thought about TB in a singular drug concept. It has never been part of our thinking, our strategy, anything like that. We have always, for years, have thought about developing fully novel regimens with fully new drugs. And we also have always wanted to remove DST at the outset. It's a programmatic impediment. You know, if we could get away from that, it would be a great, great improvement, cost savings to programs, and also time to get patients on treatment and accurate treatment. And then also to move to an HIV-like model where we create a real-time treatment monitoring tool so that we can have real-time decision-making. But the key now is to realize that vision goes back to the slide where I showed the outcomes data, and what concerns me is that we have these new drugs. We have delaminid, bedaquiline, lanazolit, et cetera, and they're likely going to be part of what might be this future vision, at least the first version of it. Yet they're being used in the sickest patients, and even with better outcomes, one could argue, than what's historically happened, improving from 10 to 70%, it still leaves the other 30%. And the viability of reaching this vision is going to be dependent on, for example, how much resistance is going to develop to those various drugs, and then whether we need DST five years from now before starting a patient on treatment, because if that happens, then the paradigm that Larry's going to present falls. And I think a lot of things become very complicated when that paradigm falls apart. And with that, I'll turn it over to Larry to talk about our new compound to start.
So we'll hold the questions until Larry is finished. So it's Larry Guider, who's the Vice President for Otsuka Novel Products in the TB area.
So as Raj mentioned, I'll be presenting on a candidate new compound, and it's lovingly been named OPC167832. We'll get a real name for it if it turns out to be a candidate drug as opposed to just a candidate compound. OPC167832, and in the future, I'm just going to call it OPC, is based on a carbosterol structure. The carbosterol structure is shown here on the slide, and actually, I see Charles Wells, when he was working with us, one of our trips over to Japan, we met with the inventor of the carbosterol platform, and he was pointing out that if you put a side chain at one of the points of this molecule, you end up with a PDE inhibitor. If you put the side chain on another part of the molecule, you end up with a beta-2 agonist, which was a bilify, Otsuka's major project or product for a long time. And he said that he was very confident that if he put side chains at another part of the molecule, that he would end up with an antimicrobial compound, and if they just messed around with that side chain, that he'd come up with an anti-TB compound. And I have to, at this point, give great acknowledgements to not only him, but all medicinal chemists who have some idea that if I just put a side chain out here and I mess around with it a little bit, something will happen. Otsuka has six licensed products based that are carbosterol derivatives, and one of the reasons that they keep working with this platform is that in general, the carbosterol compounds have improved absorption, distribution, metabolism, excretion, and the toxicity profiles have been quite good. I should point out that Otsuka does not do target-based screening programs. They work with a structure, like in this case, carbosterol platform with side chains on it that they think will be useful. They look, they do basic phenotypic screening. If they see a potential candidate, they then go through extensive safety screening, and it's only at that point that they begin to look seriously at efficacy and at mechanisms of action. So we didn't start out trying to develop a DPRE1 inhibitor, but in fact, that's what this drug is, that they generated a number of resistant mutants to OPC. They then did genome screening, and they found that all of the resistant mutants had mutations to the DPRE1 gene, and that if they complemented back with wild-type DPRE1 gene, the drug was effective. So we now believe that that is the major mechanism of action, is inhibition of the product, the enzyme, DPRE1, and that is involved in an important step in cell wall synthesis. The MICs for MTB are very, very low, ranging from 24 picograms to about 2 nanograms, and so very, very low MICs. The frequency of spontaneous mutation is also very low, about 10 to the minus 9 to 10 to the minus 7. And we just point out that that's very similar to say to what you would get with rifampicin, and that where the rate of spontaneous mutation for delaminid is a bit higher, the combination of the two drugs, we think will be very, very, they'll complement each other and protect each other. OPC is back to your saddle against both rapidly growing and also intracellular bacilli. Looking at the in vivo efficacy pharmacology, in the mouse model where it's been studied in chronic mouse models, the effective dose has been identified at being about 1.25 milligrams per kilogram. It's been studied in combination with delaminid and then in combination with other anti-TB drugs, and in no case was it found antagonistic. In most cases, it was additive. In no cases did we find synergy. The OPC-delaminid combination and then adding other drugs to that two-drug combination resulted in efficacies in the chronic mouse model that were more effective than the standard regimens either for DSTB or MDRTB, which leads us to think that we may be looking at potential for shorter treatment periods with improved treatment outcomes. Our vision for this new compound is to pair it with delaminid and one or two other recently developed anti-TB drugs, and saying recently developed, so we're talking about drugs that are well-characterized, and as Jerry just pointed out, that we know, we understand something about the pharmacology of those drugs in combination with the OPC-delaminid combination, that this would be, in the terminology of the recently released target- this would be, in the terminology of the recently-released target regimen profiles, a pan-TB regimen. And we'd be hoping that we would shorten DSTB treatment and improve the safety profile over what we have now with the current standard for drug regimen. If we can do that, as Raj mentioned, this would be potentially a combination where you would not need to do drug susceptibility testing, at least until it gets out there in wide use. And nature always finds ways around things, but at least for a while, there wouldn't be a drug susceptibility testing. And in the context of MDR-XDR therapy, that it would remove the need for an injectable. This is actually our current steps. We started the single ascending dose study in, in early October. We have completed that, completed the analysis. And just this week, we dosed the second group of patients at the second dose level. This will, single ascending dose studies go through a series of dose levels until you either hit a maximum tolerated dose, or you, at least for us, until we get ten times what we anticipate will be the target dose. The next step would then be a multiple ascending dose study, and which would then be followed by EBA studies. The EBA studies would be for delamin, or excuse me, for OPC alone first, and then for the OPC-delaminid combination to assume, to ensure that we don't have any negative drug-drug interactions in the clinical setting. And then we would move on to regimen studies. And I'll be very honest, saying that I don't know what the next step is from EBA into regimen studies. That, and we've talked with a number of people here around this, that a fourteen-day EBA regimen study doesn't make a lot of sense. Going into a, you know, two-month kind of sputum culture conversion study, that also doesn't make a lot of sense to me if your target's a three-month or a four-month regimen. So, we're also probably not going to be able to just jump into a Phase III study. It will probably be a newer design, and a lot of people are thinking about designs. And what I'll be talking about next with the LAM assay, we may be able to do some kind of adaptive approach that will take us to the regimen studies. In terms of identifying the regimens, we're working with CPTR. And if anybody is here from CPTR, a shout-out to you that they're an extremely great group to work with and very, very helpful. And so, we'll be working with them to study the drugs individually and in combination in the hollow fiber model system. We have agreements to work with Cliff Berry and people in his laboratory doing marmoset model studies. And mouse models are continuing in the Otsuka laboratories. Another shout-out is to, well, Jan's here, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. We have been in communication with them and talking about our development program, have recently received a planning grant from them to work with them in a formal fashion on an integrated product development plan. And again, a great group of people who have been, to work with, who have been very, very helpful to us as we think about how to go forward, bringing, you know, a second kind of day compound, hopefully, to the stage of being a second new drug and developing a short-course regimen. So, the next new technology is a LAM assay. And at this point, we are looking at this more as a drug development tool. But as time progresses, this could also contribute to potentially diagnosis or to be a treatment monitoring tool. And I hope I'll clarify that in the next few slides. So, Otsuka has developed a LAM assay that's based upon a group of monoclonal antibodies that were developed in a number of different species. And importantly, with the monoclonal antibodies that we have, there is no cross-reactivity amongst, or cross-reactivity with standard or common oral bacteria. And we tested it against a whole range of oral bacteria. That means we can use it with sputum. So, the current test platform is a LAM Eliza. If we continue with success as we develop this, we'll be looking at other platforms that will be easier and faster to conduct than a LAM Eliza. But right now, you can get quantitative results from the LAM assay in about five hours. The lower limit of detection is eight-point-five picograms, and the lower limit of quantification is about fifteen picograms per ml, which puts us somewhere in the range of about seventy to one-hundred-and-twenty CFUs per ml. And that's roughly the sensitivity of a solid media culture. We're not yet down to the sensitivities of a midget assay, but solid media culture has, you know, served us pretty well in the past. And so, we're fairly confident that we will be able to use this in assessing bacterial load. The LAM assay can be done on direct or processed sputum. It can be done on fresh or frozen sputum, processed sputum. And so, there's a lot of flexibility in how you can do the test. So far, we've evaluated it in three different clinical trials, comparing it in different assays in different trials, but with AFB smear, with midget culture, and with nucleic acid amplification tests, including both the LAMP assay and the GeneXpert. We also recently completed an assessment of the, our LAM Eliza with a well-defined set of, well-characterized set of sputum specimens that were provided by FIND. And a paper's in progress, but the report from FIND is that they were quite positive about the results that we got. Across all of the tests, one of the things that we've seen is that the decline in LAM or the quantitative result that we get in the measurement of LAM correlates quite well with changes in midget TTD, which is, it can be a proxy for bacterial load. But it's also a good, in terms, in looking at not only midget TTD, but also the, either whether it's four-plus, three-plus, two-plus, one-plus, scanty, or whatever, with the smear result, which gives us confidence, again, that we can measure bacterial load with this assay.
Larry, you have one minute.
Okay. So, very quickly, that this just shows that, how it would compare with other assays, that looking and comparing the decline in LAM in a group treated with HRZE with results of colony-forming counts, colony-forming unit counts in an EBA study, they're quite similar. And so, the summary is that we're working on an assay that we think will be able to assess bacterial load of, in sputum of TB patients in clinical studies, that this will support adaptive designs, and hopefully, or possibly, support the personalization of TB treatment in clinical care. We're working, again, with CPTR to see qualification of the LAM assay as either an innovative drug development method here in Europe, or a drug development tool with the FDA in the U.S. Again, we've received a planning grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and a lot of help and assistance in thinking about how to continue to develop this assay.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. You know, in the interest of time, we do have to move on, even though this is very, very exciting news that we have a compound and an assay. And I think at the end, we'll have a little bit of time for questions. So, we'll, we'll move on. Thank you.
Yeah. So, the next presenter is Jim Giewens from, he's the Deputy Director of the TB Team at the Gates Foundation. He'll talk about BDM, Melinda Gates Foundation's strategy for the new TB drug development and support for the palm TB regimen.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Here we are. So, in fifteen minutes, I'm going to try to just give a couple of highlights of the TB drug strategy that we are working off at the Gates Foundation. And just to remind ourselves, what is strategy? Strategy is, it's actually how you optimally deploy your resources for maximum effect without contact at that point with the enemy, if you want to have a military definition. So, strategy for us is very much a matter of choices. How do we choose what we do? And why do we choose to do it? So, that's one point. The other thing is, I'm trying here to perhaps touch upon a few less-known aspects of our TB drug strategy. You know, we've, there's, there has been a lot of visibility in the late-stage trials and all of that. So, that's not so much where I will be going today. So, first of all, how do we work at the foundation? We are, in essence, a matrix organization. And so, in the center here, we have six health program strategy teams in our global health part. So, Trevor Mandel heads up global health. And there are six strategies, and one of which is TB. And then we have a number of functional experts, functionally expert departments that support us in executing our strategy. So, for example, in the TB drug space, we get tremendous support from discovery and definitely from integrated development, not so much for vaccine development, obviously, but certainly integrated delivery, business development, and policy and advocacy. And that's kind of how we work. One point I would like to make, so I'm standing here as the Deputy Director for TB drugs, but the drug strategy is totally integrated in an overall TB strategy. So, we have these different initiatives, as we call it, going on. Transmission pathogenesis immunology, that's my colleague, Willem Hanukum. Diagnostics, Jim Gallarda. Delivery, Daniel Shan. Erica and Krista Lawrner for resource mobilization. But the point is that we are not working independent of each other, that there really are a lot of interfaces and collaborative efforts. This is a slide, I think, that many of us have seen, generated by WHO. The point of which is that if you look at the current decline, whoops, if you look at the current decline, it's about two percent per year. The aspiration is pretty impressive to get to this point by 2050. And it's our belief, of course, that if we are serious about this, we're going to really require some heavy-duty technological improvements to actually make this happen. And this is something, it's an area where, where we are actively participating because the overall goal of our program is to help reduce the incidence of the disease. So, a couple of things. In our strategy choices, we start from a few beliefs we have, assumptions that we have. So, one, for example, is that an, an cheap triage test that you could use way in the periphery would really help to act, to detect active diseases and therefore contribute to reduction of incidence. We want, obviously, better-performing antibiotic regimens, which include shorter, and increased efforts to support patients with adherence technologies. And so, we're investing in adherence technologies. The ones that are literally affected, but there's a large pool, we're interested in finding out who are the ones that have an imminent risk of going to active the TB and therefore could require an intervention. We definitely need to have some way of identifying, we don't believe that all TB patients are equally infectious. And so, to really be able to focus on the most infectious patients when trying to reduce transmission and thereby reduce the reduction of incidence is also a, an area we'd work, a belief that we have. And then certainly, last but not least, I, the drug person in the team, completely agree that if we really want to eliminate this disease, it's going to require a vaccine. I think we can do a lot with the drugs and really make a difference, but at the end of the day, I think we're going to require a vaccine. So, this is a graphic trying to explain where we can have intervention points. So, early on, it's, I'm doing this, yeah, it's about blocking transmission. If that's not successful and people get infected, then it's about trying to block the establishment of the infection. If that doesn't work out, then there is the area where we try to block going from progression to active disease, and then we actually have active disease, then it's about treating and curing, curing the patients as effectively as possible. Now, the next slide looks scary, but it's the colors that matter. This is a view of January 2014, where you, each bar here is some activity that we are funding, if it's in the pink. So, in 2014, we had a bunch of interventions around block transmission, prevent establishment of infection, slow progression and treatment. And the pink ones are the activities that we were funding in 2014. And just drawing your attention to one of them, on the cure side, at the bottom, the green, is about a cure, a marker for cure. And in 2016, we've sort of expanded our portfolio of things that we are funding to include all of these in one's way or another. What it also implies is compared to prior, prior years, we are what we internally call moving to the left. So, there's more investments now than there used to be in fundamental research, biology, trying to better understand the bacterium in the host and the interaction between the hosts, rather than pretty advanced, say, vaccine programs in, in large-scale Phase II Now, back to the drugs for a moment. So, our overall goal, in support of the goal to read, to reduce the incident, is to develop this universal regimen we are all talking about now, which would be, which would work to treat all types of active TB and would require minimal to no drug susceptibility testing. And there are a couple of things here that we, we, if we believe in this, and I'm, again, I'm not talking about the, the large-scale programs that are advancing, and you've heard about in other session in the meetings, but we think that it's fundamentally going to require new drugs. So, we've done a lot of work to enhance the TB drug discovery activities in a program that we call the TB Drug Accelerator. Another thing that we've started to do is putting some effort in host-erecta therapy. It's manifest that in this disease, there's a host component. It's not the largest of our, of our investments, but we do have an interest in, in exploring a host-erecta therapy. And on the bottom, you see, again, the assay for cure. Just as an example, we probably invest more in new methods development, methods to evaluate TB drugs than, than most people know. And Larry gave the example of the hollow fiber system, which is an in vitro way to try to come up with combinations, for example, but also commissioning works on QT prolongation in combination therapy, in all sorts of pharmacological models, tools for meta-analysis and all of that. There's a substantial, substantial amount of our funding that goes to these methods improvement areas. This is an example of what's new in, in discovery. I think I'm going to, in the interest of time, skip over that. Some of it is repetitive, to what we are targeting specific, adapted to the host bugs and other things to enhance the general discovery activities. Now, this is the slide we've used before. Larry also mentioned CPTR, Critical Path to TB Drug Regimens. The whole purpose of this program is to test new drugs in combinations before they are individually approved. And the reason for going this way is it would just take too long if you would do it one by one, as you would classically be expected to do in the, the older regulations, given that, you know, each of, of these cycles to get one drug through is at least six years. We're not, because of the duration of the trials, we're not talking about malaria here. The downside, of course, is they take a bit higher risk, because if you really have new drugs and there's an unexpected safety signal that pops up when you're in combination, it can be hard to contribute which one did it, so to speak. And then last year, in, I wanted to say just a few words about the different strategies that people are following, the regulatory strategies, the clinical development regulatory strategies. And there really are four ways now that one can think about coming up with new TB drugs and new TB drug regimens. The first one is the classical path in drug-sensitive disease. The second one is the accelerated approval path in MDR disease. Then there's the unified, and we call it unified because it combines, it works with DS patients and MDR patients in the same trial. And then most recently, with the NICS study, many of you are aware, there's sort of the stepwise stepwise de-escalation pathway in which you start with the people who have the highest medical need. So the point of the drug sensitive pathway is that it's done in drug sensitive disease and from mid, everything on the clinical pharmacology side, on the early part phase one is the same for each of the regimens, but the difference is in the Phase II and in the Phase III. So in this case, you go with combinations as a Phase II B, and then you get into these non-inferiority studies, because you're in the S where the standard of care really produces a very high cure rate. The path in MDR is different. It is driven by the possibility to get a drug approved based on Phase II data. And typically, this would be done by adding one drug to an existing standard of care and making that comparison. So it speeds up when you get your approval, but there still is a Phase III study to be done. So that's like at the, at the back end of that, that needs to be considered. And so what the universal pathway does, it does include drug sensitive and drug resistant patients in, as of Phase II. The way it works is that the drug sensitive patients are statistically compared to the control, the HRZE, and the drug resistant patients are compared to the drug sensitive Advantages and disadvantages. The classic, the first drug sensitive pathway, it's regulatory conservative, it's been done, and the trial designs are pretty much established. If you really change only one drug at a time, you may have very tight non-inferiority margins, and the fact that you have to work with non-inferiority margins, that's always a discussion in itself. The accelerated MDR approval has the advantage of the initial approval of fairly limited data, and it's proven, it's been done, it works. The disadvantage is that you have no simplification, there's no shortening, there's no simplification, it's adding a drug to an existing treatment. And like I said, you still are expected to do a Phase III study. And then the unified pathway, it addresses both DS and MDR. It shores in the treatment also in MDR, and it's less expensive to treat people, it leads to hopefully a less expensive MDR treatment than what we know and are used to today. But it's technically more risky, of course, like I said, and it's also unproven. There are, development seem ongoing that actually follow this pathway, but so far, no drug has been approved that has used this development pathway. And then my last slide, there now is a fourth way to establish this universal regimen. And an example here is the NICS trial. And the way this works, and it actually is often used in oncology indications or in epilepsy, for example, where you start with the patients that have the highest medical need, where the potential benefit, in fact, justifies treatment with a new combination, where you frankly don't know everything you would like to know about. And not to be forgotten, it uses a cure endpoint. It uses cure six months after completion of therapy. So this whole discussion of are the tumor conversions predictive or not, and the solid and the liquid, and all that discussion goes away because you do have curing points in this study. If it works out, in our case, XDR patients, then remember, the goal is not just XDR, it's to ultimately get to drug sensitive patients as well, then you can de-escalate into, go into a population that has significant medical need, but not as high as the XDR patients, and take that next step down. In the meantime, you're generating data that are fileable. So there is an opportunity now to consider filing on data that were collected in studying XDR or data that were collected in studying MDR patients while you are working towards your final goal of a universal regimen. So this is for us quite exciting, and you see how there are different regulatory strategies that in a way provide different shots on goal, so to speak, and different ways to come up with a universal regimen, which we then hope will contribute to reduction of the incidence of the disease. So thank you. A slight reminder for the patients and the people we're working for.
Thank you very much. As the interest of time suggests, to take the questions at the end. We have one more presentation. I would like to introduce Marco Cavallari to talk about, from United Kingdom, to talk about updates on the new regulations, entire regimens or combinations versus individual compounds.
Hello, good afternoon. So now is the time of the regulators to express their view, and I will present here the current perspective from the European Medicine Agency. And I think it's quite timely, this talking in this venue, because we are just in the middle of revising our guidance to developers with respect to developing new TB drugs and new regimen. And just to remind you that we started issuing a document, a guidance document in 2010, which was the first ever in Europe guidance document to developers for new TB drugs. And really, this year, we felt there was the time to revise this document to reflect the changing landscape of TB drug development and the experience that we had achieved with the recent approval, essentially, de lamani and bedaquiling. And also, it's an opportunity for me to say that on the 25th of November, so in less than a month from now, we will be hosting a workshop at our headquarters in London, yes, we are still in London, on this new draft guideline. And based on what the feedback that we were received, and also during the consultation period in writing, we will then next year finalize our document, which in a way will express the view of the EMA with respect to how to develop new drugs and regimens. So the need to amend this guidance was coming essentially from our acknowledgement that there's been a switch from developing single agents into development of entire new regimens with potentially all new active substances, like free new active substances. This regimen can be developed at fixed dose combination products or co-administered as individual agents, and this will have some regulatory implication, but in terms of the regulatory science, there is no difference. This will be developed for the treatment of organisms that are susceptible to all components of the new regimen, regardless of the resistance to other drugs. So in other way, what Yan and others have said before, so moving away from this concept of drug susceptible versus drug resistant tuberculosis. And the common aim, it is our understanding that is to achieve a treatment shortening, rightly so. But the target patient population and the study design will much depends on what it expect the safety profile of the regimen, and I will come back to this later on. So I will just focus myself on some of the important areas where there has been some changes in our guidance document, and I will start with the preclinical studies. First of all, we have to acknowledge that there is no perfect model for predicting clinical efficacy for TB, that's pretty clear. However, both in vitro pharmacodynamic models and animal models provide very useful information with respect to the activity of the single agents alone or in combination. As an example, the hollow fiber model is a superb approach to examine the risk of selecting for resistance, and not only for that, and also mice models are extremely important in order to examine the rate of relapse, and particularly when you have to compare different regimen, different doses, and you have to make a selection of which to carry on into further development. So these data are expected to support the selection of the regimens to be advanced into clinical development and would describe the contribution of individual agents. This is particularly important for us as regulator, because as I will say later on, we will not be looking into any kind of factorial design for pivotal trials. Therefore, a lot of the information with respect to the need of each individual agent in the regimen will come from these preclinical studies and plus the early clinical study. And I don't have a slide on PKPD, but of course, PKPD is very important. We just issue a guideline on PKPD for antibacterial agent, that it was not expressly in design for TB drugs, was more for new drugs for treating acute bacterial infections, but a lot that has been written in that guideline could apply to TB drug development, and we look forward to see more attempts by developers to try to use that kind of methodology, which we think is very important in order to capture the most important element in the variance in the PK and the factor that would impact on the PK and on the pharmacodynamic outcome. So a few words on the microbiology during clinical trials. It would be expected that for eligibility of patients, liquid cultures will be used in order to confirm the presence of mycobacteria at baseline with addition maybe of solid cultures, if you want to be sure that you can rescue contaminated samples. But also, we are encouraging the use of rapid diagnostic tests, either marketed or even experimental, to use a screening in order to facilitate and accelerate the recruitment of patients in such trial. Susceptibility testing is expected to be done for all agents, including in the regimens as a minimal requirement, but it can be broader. And of course, we would expect the use of a central laboratory to confirm both culture and conduct susceptibility testing, particularly if non-commercialized methods are used. With respect to detection of organism during and post-therapy, we would expect the same culture method used for baseline confirmation is used. And also, it's important to take care of avoidance of any risk of carryover of actives during treatment or post-treatment, depending on the life of the drugs. Few words also on early clinical development. We heard a lot, Jerry, talking about EBA trials, and also, you know, Larry, about the relevance of a further phase to study. We would expect that anyway, this would be done in order to characterize minimally the bactericidal effect of the single agent and the combination, starting from the EBA and having a comparison with azoniazid or with the current standard of care, but also acknowledging that not all agent may exhibit rapid bactericidal activity. So therefore, it's not telling the whole story, and it would be important to take into account other way of determining what is the real effect of the regimens and individual components, particularly when it comes to sterilizing activity. Later on, what normally is expected, that longer term studies are conducted, which can be at risk, can be longer, in order to document the antimicrobial activity of the regimen in terms of some biomarkers like time to positivity or culture conversion rates of time to conversion. Comparison with a control arm, if possible, should be included, and the scripted statistic would be expected, because these are not going to be large trial, and that's why it's also so important not to draw strong conclusion based on the outcome of this small Phase II trial in terms of what would potentially work in Phase III. But nevertheless, for the time being, we were not able to think about any other way to approach this, and we heard before Larry saying that Otsuk, as an example, will be looking into alternative approaches and will be very happy to discuss such approaches when will be proposed in the future. Few words on the efficacy endpoints for pivotal trials. So the primary endpoints can be cure, which is sustained as future culture conversion, which will occur at a fixed time point from randomization, essentially six months after completion of the longest duration treatment arm, or could be used as a primary endpoint failure, which will be a composite of clinical and bacteriological failure, again, according to the same timeframe, and also including relapse rate and attributable death, where possible, into the composite. And taking into account that most of the relapses will anyway occur within six months after completion of treatment. However, because we know that relapse may occur also later on, a very important secondary endpoint will be to collect both microbiological and clinical data up to 24 months after randomization. So design of the pivotal trial, this is a brand new part of our guidance document, and here we are depicting various options. The first one would be for the development of new agents within regimens that are aimed at shortening the duration of treatment, and they are suitable for patients with several treatment options. So in other words, are suitable to be used in first line treatment. And for a fixed regimen, this could be, could be done by comparing one or more regimen and all duration of the test regimen versus standard of care. Eligible patients will have to be susceptible to all drugs in the regimen, including standard of care. The design will be a non-inferiority study versus standard of care based on a justified margin, and here we are not expressing a clearly defined number, also because we will be open to discuss justification of different margins than the one that, for example, had been used recently in the fluorokinolone trials. And if the trial is successful, then the indication, granted, for the fixed dose combination will be simply for the treatment of pulmonary tuberculosis, without the need of adding anything or qualifying anyhow for drug susceptibility. And if it's an individual agent, then there will be a need of issuing different SMPCs that will say for the treatment of pulmonary tuberculosis in combination with other agents. Then, in the same kind of approach, so with the same goal of shortening treatment duration, but with a regimen that for a number of reasons is clear that cannot be given in first line, as example, if there are some safety issue, then such trial, such pivotal trial would have to be conducted in patient with limited treatment options, so essentially MDR per XDR and XDR TB, in whom the safety profile of the test regimen is justifiable. Again, we may compare different duration or doses of the test regimen, and this comparison may be done versus well documented and relevant historical response data, or if possible, may compare the test regimen to an appropriate standard of care within the trial. And of course, as regulator, we tend to prefer to having a comparison within the trial, but we would understand that in certain circumstances, this may prove to be difficult, and therefore, we open to discuss alternative. Here, we have to admit that it would not be easy at all to define a non-inferiority margin, and therefore, it will be very important that developers that aim to go down this pathway will come to us and discuss the plan and the justification for the margin. Now, if again, the aim is to shorten the duration of treatment, but we are not talking anymore about our regimen, a fixed regimen, but a new agent in variable regimen, which of course would be a scenario that would affect essentially the drug resistant space, one approach could be to add the new agent to individually terror regimens to shorten therapy versus standard of care. It would be important to limit the range of standard of care regimen used, for, as an example, using a predefined algorithm. And again, here will be even more challenging to define a non-inferiority margin, also because we are using different OBTs, and therefore, this will further complicate things. And here again, would be important to come and discuss with us the plan. The guidelines is still mentioned, other potential scenario that still some developers would be interested to carry on, and one of the obvious one is the possibility to provide superior efficacy. Now, we have to admit that it looks quite clear that is today quite challenging to achieve superiority of a suitable, on a suitable primary endpoint for a new agent added to an optimized background regimen or for a new regimen versus standard of care, and with new drugs that will get approved will become even more challenging. So this is a fact that we have to take into account. It still might be possible in patient with very limited treatment options, so if you're talking about XDR TB patient, maybe there is still some possibility there. The primary endpoint has to be discussed, could be different than the one that we shown before, but again, not earlier than six months from the start of therapy, and in any case, there will be a need of a follow up for 12 months after end of therapy. Another option that we are keeping open, even if we don't know exactly if there were any, there will be any proposal in this sense, will be for the development of new agents with other potential benefit, which could be superior safety or improved drug-drug interaction profile, still maintaining non-inferior efficacy. Few words on the safety. I will start by saying in the obvious that unavoidably, almost all the safety data for new active substance will be derived from using combination. And for fixed regimen, therefore, it will be quite difficult to single out any individual component for specific safety issues, and even a safety issue that may be caused by single component but cannot be, you know, singled out, may drag down the entire regimen. So of course, this is a risk that is embedded in the development of such regimens and may put some hurdle in the interpretation of the data. However, to say that the comparison of different duration of therapy would help in identifying any adverse drug reaction that may occur early or later during treatment, so that is something that could be helpful. And when it comes to study of new agents in drug resistant TB, then there it will be even more complex because of the variability in the optimized background regimen, and could be extremely difficult really to identify any ADR and to, and to see the relation to any specific drug. So in summary, we are in the middle of a revision, of a quite major revision of our guidance and our recommendation to developers for new TB drugs and regimen, which reflect the major change in focus for drug development programs toward short fixed regimen. Also, the approach to the early trials has been updated, and there is also a new section on pivotal trials that that will depend on the primary aim of the program and the constituent of the regimen, indeed, in which population they can be studied. And lastly, I would say, I would reiterate that we will have a workshop in November during the consultation period. We will gather feedback from all stakeholders. Also, you are invited to provide in writing your comments to the EMA so that we can take them into account next year when we will be finalizing our guidance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have to close the session, but please feel free to contact directly the presenters to answer any potential question. Thank you very much.